Good evening. The Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in the Board Session on Thursday, August 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM in the Board Room. For the purpose of reviewing that portion of the Monday, August 12th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting Agenda, designated as action items and to hear designated reports and recognition posted in the meeting notice as required by law. I want to welcome our members of the audience and our online viewers to meeting of the Board of Trustees. We are here to set goals, listen reports, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are responsibility of Superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a meeting of the Board Trustees that is being held in the public. This is not a meeting of the public, and the audience members may not participate in the meeting outside of the designated agenda item or citizen participation. The meeting will be conducted in orderly and efficient manner in accordance with the law and local policy. An order achieved, the goal, and participants in the audience are expected to abide by the rules outlined in the Board Policies and the law. Disruption by the meeting of any person, including the audience, is inappropriate and will be addressed by the Board President or the Board's Counsel as departmentarian. Continued or repeated disruption by the Board in words or actions is unacceptable. It is a criminal offense for participants or audience members to, with intent, prevent or disrupt the Board Meeting, to substantially obstruct or interfere with the meeting. This can be by physical harm or utterance. Individuals who are boisterous, disruptive, or fail to abide by these rules of the meeting may be asked to leave in the gallery and observe the meeting from the overflow area. Failure to leave the meeting in the gallery when requested to do so may result in being removed from the premises and subject to arrest. Part of this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items may not necessarily represent those handled in order listed on the notes. During the course of the meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session and consider matters duly posted for the meeting permitted by Sections 551.071 and 551.084 of the Texas Government Code. These proceedings are airing live on the district website. They are also available on the district websites following tonight's meeting. For the video to accurately reflect the proceedings, I ask you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and their cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and your interest in our Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. Tonight, we have Grace Hanley from Dr. Oliverson's office. Glad to be here. The invocation, pledge of allegiance, vision, remarks, announcements, recognitions, board comments, citizen participation will all be presented at the Regular Board Meeting on Monday, August 12th, 2024. At each open meeting of the Board, patrons are registered in accordance with the procedures established in BED Regulation and may address the Board during the designated agenda comments prior to the Board's consideration upon the action item. Unless the agenda is otherwise rearranged by the Board President during the meeting, agenda comments will generally be taken prior to each agenda item. However, because the Texas Open Meetings Act does not require government body to hear complaints or charge against a public officer or an employee of the open meeting, agenda comments that may address complaints or concerns against individuals will be held in closed session and may be moved or taken out of order. Also, in accordance with the procedures established by BED Regulation, patrons may address the Board during citizen participation on matters of interest or concern that are not posted on the agenda items. The Texas Meetings Opens Act does not require the government body to hear complaints or charge against a public official or an employee in the meeting. Therefore, citizen participation comments that address complaints or concerns to those individuals will be heard in closed session and will be moved or taken out of order. Meeting participants are advised that speaking during a meeting does not automatically create immunity from statements made to violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or individual privacy are not protected. If a speaker is unsure of the legal effect of their remarks, the speaker should seek legal advice in advance. Lastly, please note that the Board members may not respond to you publicly during a participation comments. This does not indicate an agreement with their comments or the comments are necessarily true. For detailed information on registering, please visit our website. Patrons who have registered speak this evening will see your names listed in order in the screen behind me. Please come forward and sit on the reserved seats. Please use the microphone on the left-hand side because we are having audio problems tonight. When you approach the podium, you'll see your monitor inside the podium. When it's your time to speak, the presentation will be displayed on top of the monitor. You'll have 30 seconds and a 15-second warning to wrap up your comments. The timer will be set in accordance with the speakers registered this evening. We'll now proceed with the Reports Section of the Agenda. 5A, the administration will provide a report on the potential future changes pertaining to high school students' GPA and class rank.
Good evening. There we go. Good evening, President Henry and Board Members. This evening, we would like to share with you potential future changes to course selections, class rank, and GPA. For the past two, two-and-a-half years, we have been attending conference sessions, visiting with other districts and with some colleges about the impact of the possible changes we are proposing that will have on our students. The plan includes streamlining the required state courses for graduation, an opportunity for more student college applications to be reviewed, adjustments to our advanced course offerings, possibly more students meeting the required CCMR designation, and an increased opportunity for students to pursue areas of interest to them. After this meeting's presentation, we plan to visit with some of our district committees and also have open meetings for parents and the community and community members to solicit input on the possible changes. We will then come back to you later this fall to present the plan with modifications based on the input that we receive from the community. Kenya Turner, our Director for High School Curriculum and Instruction, and Dr. Bergman, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary CNI, will share information on the topics that we are going to be soliciting input from the community. Kenya?
Evening. We will be gathering input. We will be gathering input on discontinuing PACE and HEALTH as CFISD graduation requirements, limiting ranking to the top 10% of a graduating class, removing the K-level option where there is an AP or dual-credit option, and creating a ranked GPA used only for class ranking. We would like to share information about each of these topics to provide context for the input we will be gathering. We plan to provide a report in November, as Dr. Macias referred to, summarizing the input along with possible recommendations that may require Board action. The first topic will be the discontinuation of HEALTH and PACE as local graduation requirements. They are highlighted on the screen from the current graduation chart. This change would allow students to take one additional elective course. HEALTH could continue as an elective option for students if this district prefers, or the course option could go away entirely. After receiving input, if we move forward, we suggest making this change for this year's eighth graders. This will allow the course offering process to not include these as graduation requirements for these students and beyond. This also allows time for the curriculum documents and registration materials to be updated and communicated to parents prior to any high school course selections. Now, Dr. Bergman will share information about the second topic.
So, the second topic that we'll be gathering input on is no longer publishing class rank beyond the top 10% of each graduating class. Students who graduate in the top 10% of their high school class and meet additional criteria may be eligible for automatic admission to institutions of higher learning in Texas. But districts are not required to rank students outside the top 10%, and we have learned through our research that students outside the top 10% may benefit from not being ranked. If a district implements this practice, students who are outside the top 10% of their graduating class may report on their college application that their district does not rank. The benefit is that we have learned applications for students who mark they are not ranked may receive a more comprehensive review instead of being set aside because they're not automatically in the top 10%. Other districts who have implemented this practice have reported increases in student admissions to some of the highly competitive state universities after they ceased the ranking practice outside of the top 10%. Because this practice would not impact how GPA is calculated, if we move forward, we believe this could be implemented this spring with our current 11th graders who will receive their class ranking and their GPA as they begin to work on their college applications. Now, Ms. Turner is going to share some information about our K-level courses.
CFISD offers up a wide variety of choice in course offerings and course levels, such as ON Level, K Level, Horizons, which is our Gifted and Talented Program, Advanced Placement, and Dual Credit. We are proposing that we remove the K-level offering where there is an AP or dual-credit offering. We have many capable students who pursue the weighted but less rigorous option of K-level. K-level is not recognized by the state. While it is more rigorous than ON Level, it is not the rigor of AP and Dual Credit, yet it receives the same GPA weight. Removing K-level should also help with our CCMR and accountability as more students may pursue courses with weighted points such as AP and Dual Credit that indicate to the state that we have college and career-ready students. If we move forward with this recommendation, the change will need to be communicated during the eighth-grade year prior to four-year planning and course selections. The adjustment to advanced course offerings would allow for campuses to more efficiently offer advanced courses with fewer staff.
And our fourth topic. The table on this slide is the CFISD GPA Grading Scale. As Ms. Turner just mentioned, some courses receive weighted grade points. Students who take weighted courses can enhance their overall GPA. We will be getting feedback about creating a ranked GPA, which would not change course rating, and it would not change how a student's cumulative GPA is calculated. The rationale for proposing a ranked GPA calculation is to create opportunities for students to pursue courses that they are interested in that may not include weighted opportunities. We've learned from multiple student groups who we surveyed across a number of years who are focused on maximizing opportunities to earn a higher GPA that they often choose courses based on GPA impact, not on their own interest. Districts across the state have moved in this direction about creating this separate rank calculation in recent years to encourage students to do exploration based on their interest and not solely on the weighted grade point average. Some districts have created a ranked GPA that is calculated using a subset or a standard set of courses. Some districts, for instance, have used their core courses required for graduation as their standard set of courses for the ranked GPA. Under this structure, students who are interested in courses without weighted grade points could pursue these courses without negatively impacting their class rank. Students would still receive a cumulative GPA that will be reflected on the transcript. There's no change there. However, the ranked GPA would be used to determine just the top 10%. For each of these topics, we have mentioned possible phase-in timelines. The phase-in is on a little bit of an expanded timeframe, and this is because of when students are able to access high school credit courses here in Cyfair. In the middle of the sixth-grade year, campuses begin to share information with their sixth-grade students about seventh-grade elective options. Sixth-grade students and their parents may select from six high school credit options in addition to other electives for seventh grade. Currently, LOT and CTE courses are not included in the student's GPA calculation. In seventh grade, students may select from an initial eight high school credit courses in LOT and CTE. Other high school credit courses such as art, native speakers 3K, and geometry are currently included in the GPA when taken in middle school. In eighth grade, students begin to receive lessons related to their high school endorsements and complete the four-year plan. This table summarizes the information regarding timelines for each of those topics. As was mentioned, over the next couple of months, we will be presenting this information to several of our committees and groups and seeking their input. Information about the topics being discussed, dates of public meetings, and a Q&amp;A document will be posted on the district website. As Kenya mentioned, in November, we do plan to bring an update on the input received and possible recommendations. The possible phase-in timeline is on the right side of that that we mentioned in pink and is summarized for your easy reference. And at this time, we welcome any questions.
Can anybody hear me? All right, the karaoke mic is working perfect. Question about the elimination of K-level classes. So, if we eliminate K-level classes, do we have an expectation of where some of the more the kids who would be in K-level, where they may end up, where they end up? Do we see them gravitating more towards AP, dual-credit? Do we see most of them would just go to ON Level? What would be an expectation of where these kids would end up going?
I think it depends on a student's interest and course sequence that they're interested in taking. Our ON Level courses teach all of the TEACs at a high level of rigor and offer challenge to all students. Students might be interested in moving into AP courses, which don't have the same prerequisites as possibly dual-credit courses do. So, there are really options for all students depending on which pathway they're interested in following.
Okay.
If there is not a dual-credit or AP option, we will still continue with a K-level option.
That's good to know. Okay, thank you. And if I understand correctly, we would only eliminate K-level if it duplicated an AP course. Okay. Is this, how many other districts across Texas still offer K-level classes? And is it a trend, are we heading in a trend to eliminate them and kind of spread them out towards AP and dual-credit and other things?
Well, K-level is actually, I think, a Cyfair ISD designation. So, I'm going to let Kenya give you a little bit of the history of it so she can talk about each of the courses.
So, school districts do offer honors, but most school districts where there is an AP or a dual-credit offering do not have another honors-based course. Your honors kids are placed there.
So, that's good for my, so our, you know, so I did K-level when I was in high school here. So, that's basically our designation of the honors classes that other districts may have across the state. It's just a designation of an honors-level class.
We have an honor separate and apart, like we have Horizons where there's the tag, and then the K-level is just an honors, a different level of rigor in there before they get to AP.
Very good. Thank you for your help.
My question is, I'm wondering about the young mind in considering, since we are unique to have the K-level, to make that change at the same time as messaging out that we will now not have ranking quite the same way or outside of top 10% and the whole GPA. I'm wondering if there could be a correction on the students the opposite direction? Maybe rather than going up to AP or dual-credit, maybe saying, wow, if it's not ranked, I'm going to go on ahead and just take ON Level? And just how we would message and counsel towards that to make sure we didn't have the unintended consequence of less CCMR-ready students?
A couple of things, Dr. Blassing, and we've been collaborating with our counseling department all along because the information that students get and they're shared with parents will be very important in communication. One of the other things is that there are few AP options for ninth graders, you know, AP human geography, for instance. Most of those courses don't have an AP or dual-credit. So, our ninth graders would still have that ON Level, K Level, or the Horizons option, and that continues for a lot of courses in 10th grade. So, that will also allow for some phase-in time in understanding their course selection and making any adjustments as they move into 11th and 12th grade.
Another question would be, I know there's, it seems like in, there's some, maybe necessarily, some rigidity about when the kids started a class that they can't come out. I know of different parents about, for example, some of the higher-level math and that kind of stuff. So, I would wonder if there wouldn't be any considerations in the system for students say, hey, we want to push you to try the rigorous option? And then, let's say that was too rigorous, but we want them to take the risk or to try, and then we would have some pathways where we could let them go back to something else. And so, I just know that we haven't always had that culture of ability to change. And so, maybe we would want to consider some of our policies that would then encourage students to try for the more rigorous courses.
We do have that opportunity in many cases. There are a few exceptions to that because the TEACs don't line up, for instance, with the AP required standards there. And we're going to continue to look at that because we do want kids to have options, and we do want them to be successful. But we do have some of those already built in, and I think it always bears to continue to reflect on them.
Dr. Blassing? Excuse me. We've also worked at increasing the rigor for our L-level courses. And so, we've been working on that for a couple of years now as well. But I also wanted to share that one of the unintended, I guess, consequences for K-level for some of our kids is that while the state requires all students to be college career-ready, right, CCMR, we find kids who have only taken K-level courses, sitting in the very advanced courses, and they're not college career-ready per the state. And so, this also will help us so that every student is identified as college career-ready as required by the state.
I agree with that. I also think that just the support around AP exams and those kinds of things because the students aren't paying for college. And I think that if there's a push and a support in order to encourage students to do that, then they are CCMR, but also they have those college credits that, you know, will save some dollars at the end because K doesn't carry that option.
I have a couple of questions and then one comment. My first question has to do with, oh, I just lost it. Oh, because we're making these changes, is now also an appropriate time to consider adjusting our grade point scale? Because many times our seniors struggle with reporting a grade point average when we have these higher weights? And so, is this also an opportunity to revisit that as well?
Along with this research, we actually looked at GPA scales from a wide variety of districts. I don't know that making two significant changes at the same time might be recommended. I actually visited a lot with Friendswood ISD, who's one of the districts that implemented this. And they were really great in just sharing their whole process. And that was one of the things they found that it was important to communicate with their committees, their stakeholders, and really help everyone understand the things that they were proposing, and then possibly looking at further changes. And when I talked to her, I don't know if they've actually gone through with it, she was thinking that looking at their actual, their grade points might be sort of the next thing in their phase, and they did it over several years.
Okay, that makes sense. It's just because so many of our graduates struggle when they have to report their grade point average that, because they may have a 6.2. And like, what does that mean? It has to be adjusted by the on-campus college career specialists?
But we can add that to the plan, Ms. Heidemann, as a later topic to consider and look at.
Okay, okay. And then, my comment is regarding removing K-level classes. We've talked several times about the impact on our CCMR score in the Texas State Accountability System. That's an us issue. That has to do with how school districts are evaluated by the state in the state accountability system. I want to make sure we're not making decisions for those reasons that we're also considering the impact on students. Because that's a decision that may not necessarily benefit students, but it benefits our score with the state.
Agreed, and that's why I said that was an unintended consequence for some students, not all students, for some students. But really, we've talked about K-level, I don't know, for years now. We've talked to the students and the Superintendent Student Advisory Group, and it's kind of been mixed. And even the students acknowledge that K-level is not at the same rigor as AP and dual-credit. They like it because it's a little easier. They can kind of take a little break from it, but it's not at the same rigor as those other two. So, it's kind of been back and forth, but we've had these discussions. And it's just a good time for us to look at all this. And as we said, we are taking the show on the road and going to visit with different groups and then having some open meetings for any community member to come and attend and listen and give input.
Great, thank you. Just a concern to share about removing K-level courses, and which is, I'm fine with that part, but just in an effort to push students to AP and dual-credit classes, we need to make sure that we are sharing resources with parents because those classes carry costs. There's a cost to taking the test. There's a cost to enrolling in a dual-credit class. So, I want to make sure that we are aware of the barriers to participate in AP and dual-credit from a financial standpoint. And then, my last question has to do, if we just go back to the first slide, the four topics that you're sharing, which of these do require Board action and which are administrative?
So, the PACE and the HEALTH are local graduation requirements that are established by the Board previously. So, that would require Board action to remove those as local requirements for graduation.
And what about the other items?
The other items are not reflected in policy as requiring changes. Our policy does talk about the top 10% in ranking related to the requirement in the law, but doesn't give any specificity. So, how we rank and the timelines and when we provide that to students, all that would stay the same.
Okay, so the only item of the four topics that you've shared with us for consideration that require Board action is the removal of PACE and HEALTH as graduation requirements, but everything else are administrative decisions. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
I had one more question I realized. I actually was very intrigued at this concept of ranked GPA. I'm not sure, I appreciate how you described it because I got a clearer picture. Have we found in districts where they do ranked GPA that they end up like with 30 valedictorians and 25 co-valedictorians, and does that help kids or hurt kids?
So, we talked to quite a few districts. I mean, this has been, as Dr. Macias said, probably two and a half years, I think, when we heard the first presentation. So, one of the things that the district shared with us is that they did not find that they ended up with a bunch of students, you know, with that same grade point. And they didn't find, for instance, I spent a lot of time talking to Friendswood. They did not find that their distribution really was significantly different. What they found is the elective options that the kids were taking was really where they noticed the change when they were looking at student schedules and course requests.
The idea that students can explore interests is very interesting to me, and it definitely has been limited, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the Board? Seena, thank you very much for your presentation. Very well done. The Board will now review the following consent agenda items. During review, the following action items the Board Member may remove or move these items around, at which time these items will be addressed and voted on individually. If any Board Member has a question regarding an item, please ask to be recognized on the consent agenda items. 6A, the Board will consider approving the minutes of June 17th. 6B, the Board will consider approving the agreement of purchase of attendance credits for 2024-2025 school year. 6C, the Board will consider a resolution approving the authorized to calculate the no new revenue tax rate and the voter-approved tax rate and the other truth and taxation requirements. 6D, the Board will consider approving the annual contract with Avina Healthcare. 6E, the Board will consider authorizing the Superintendent to evaluate the memorandum of understanding with Texas Women's University and the Idaho State University for Speech Pathology and Field Placement. 6F, the Board will consider approving an inter-local agreement with the University of Houston. 6G, the Board will consider approving the Harris County Road Drainage Easement near Cypress Ridge High School. This item may be discussed in closed session. 6H, the Board will consider approving the Second Amendment to the Water and Sewer Drainage Services Contract with Harris County Municipal District 264 and Cypress Fairbanks ISD. 6I, the Board will consider approving bids, contracts, and authorizing purchase orders as recommended on the post-agenda item. orders as recommended on the post-adjournment item. 6I-1, distribution of contract for bid for banquet catering and concessions. 6I-2, group term life AD&amp;D insurance renewal. 6I-3, MAP growth. We will now proceed with the non-consent agenda items. 7A, the board will consider approving on first reading additions, revisions, or deletions to district policy. 7A-1, CKE, Local Safety Program Risk Management Security Personnel. 7A-2, Security Personnel Commission Peace Officer. 7A-3, CQC, Technology Resources Equipment. Any questions?
I do, a couple of questions. My understanding is the deletion of CKE Local is driven by legislative changes in the 88th. No? No? Okay, no, no. But no, if I'm off, tell me.
It was broken out, and they took that portion that related to commissioned police officers, security guards, school marshals, and they broke them out into separate policies. And so that deleted our portion of CKE and moved that to CKEA.
Okay. Has there been any conversation within the administration or board committees for having a CKEB?
So the, I'm sorry, you know, we have a third party that does our policy service. And so for years, CKE was, you know, security personnel. And then as options for school districts grew and providing security in different ways, everything just got into CKE. So the, you know, the policy developer recommended that, you know, we break it out, not we, that they were going to break out the policy so that it was easier to find what your district did. And so we, I don't have them in front of me, but CKEA is if you have your own police department. And then CKEB would be, I think, if you have like a school marshal program. CKEC would be guardian. And so I would say we didn't really consider any other provision, because we only have one way that we provide security. So I hope that makes sense.
Yes, no, that's great confirmation. And then my second question has to do with agenda item 7A-3 for CQC. Well, maybe that's where I got the legislative changes. Yeah, I'm looking at the bill right now, HB, I think, 18 or whatever. But so the policy that we are going to, that we are considering, CQC Local, says that the board adopts model health and safety guidelines for the effective integration of digital devices in schools that have been developed by the TEA and the Health and Human Services Commission. So what are the guidelines? I looked through CKC Legal, but they're not outlined there either.
They, I think they are in CKC Legal. So Teresa and I can tag team. So HB 18 was passed in the last session, and I probably am sitting here acting like I'm the chief technology officer, as Karen Smith is sitting over there, but I had the microphone. But and she can chime in and answer. But it's how we are codifying really the legal obligation under House Bill 18 to take what TEA has said, and they use the Health and Human Services input, and implement. And we will do that through regulation primarily, because what the law said is there are 11 different areas, T. And there, where we are to focus on technology and its, you know, impact on students and mitigate in different ways, from software to information to parents about, you know, how to learn about cybersecurity. So there are all these different standards. TEA, this was actually passed, you know, a while ago, but the, it went into effect, August 1? June 1? June 1, because it gave TEA some time to give school districts guidance. And not to sound unappreciative, but their guidance was not as rich as we thought. So then we were really trying to, in some instances, it looked a little bit like a restatement of the law. And we really thought we were going to get more kind of meat and potatoes. But Paula Ross, as usual, you know, amazing, and her amazing team, Jennifer Grimm, and then working with the instructional technology folks, and Linda's team, Todd Sepulveda, they have just been, and Dr. Bergman, they have just been working, I would say, nonstop, and that's not hyperbole, trying to figure out how we're going to get this up and going for the fall. But those are really operational things that will be in the regulation, because it really is things like, how are we going to explain to teachers about, you know, how software applications are to be used, et cetera. So that's really not policy stuff. So what our policy advisor, Tasby, recommended is that you, you know, put that language in there, that we are going to comply. And I really thought most of it was in legal. Let me let Teresa, because she's got it.
No, you're exactly right, Julie. They, the language that they put in the legal is exactly what was in the TEA guidance. And that led us to believe that they were going to get more detailed and give more specific guidance. But we'll send that to you, the 11 standards that are in the law. And that's actually, I guess, what now we have to apply. And so we're developing our operational procedures on implementing those 11 different standards.
Okay, thank you. That, I mean, that does help, because there is a gap.
There's a gap. You're exactly right.
It does say in CQC Legal that, it makes it sound like it's optional. Each district that adopts the guidelines may implement the guidelines in a manner that best meets the district's individual needs, which is just what Marty said. So that would be in regulations. It does say, if a district adopts the guidelines, the district shall post the guidelines publicly on the district's website. We don't traditionally post regulations, but maybe in this case, we will.
On that, and different procedures that need to be posted, because there's going to be a process for parents to determine whether or not they want to opt their student out of access to the different software programs. So we're going to have to do a lot of education and communication about those 11 standards, what we're implementing, and the decision that they have to make for their student.
Okay.
So yes, it will be on the district website, along with all this other information.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Going on to 7B. The board will consider approving on second reading additions, revisions, deletions of district policies. EFB Local Instructional Resources Library Materials, revise. 7B-2, GKD, Community Relations, Non-School Use of School Facilities, revise. 7B-3, FDA, Local Admissions, Inter-District Transfers, revise. Do you have two speakers? Our first speaker is Dave Mann. Would please open the left-hand side. You'll have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Dave Mann, parent, resident of the district. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. We, the parents and stakeholders of CFISD, are not interested in board trustees deciding what is or is not available to our students in their school libraries. We want educated, certified professionals making those decisions. I don't feel like you care. I feel like you're going to do what you want to do, and that's a shame. The people of CFISD ought to pay attention to that. At the last meeting, Mr. Ray referenced parents across the country supporting school boards enacting these kinds of initiatives. May I remind you all, you serve this district and this district alone, not the country, not the state, not the county, and certainly not any political party, partisan ideology, or outside special interests. Do what you're going to do, but remember, November 2025 is only 15 months away. Change is on the horizon.
Ashley Bunker? Buckner, excuse me. Not here. All right, any questions on this? To my right? No, to my left. Go ahead, Julie.
Thank you. I do have not questions, but comments regarding agenda item 7B-1, EFB Local, for instructional materials, resources, library materials. The, I do appreciate that the district posted the red line of what was being considered, including the changes that were made after the Board Policy Committee met. I appreciate that some of the edits I had suggested have been included, specifically removing the five-day sneak peek of the list of library materials to be ordered. I do appreciate that. I appreciate the transparency regarding the reconsideration process to be used to challenge library materials that are on the purchase list, and how that will be a similar process to the challenge process for books that are already acquired. So I do appreciate those changes. I also appreciate that a decision of the reconsideration committee can be appealed not just by the complainant, but that can be appealed in accordance with policies for any parent, employee, or community member. So I appreciate those changes being included of my suggested edits. I changed my suggested edits that I had made that were not included have to do with addressing nepotism, specifically appointing family members to district committees and conflicts of interest. In great conversation with General Counsel, she determined that it would be best not to address it just in one board policy, but that it would be addressed in an overall governance document, specifically board operating procedures. So I do look forward to seeing updated language addressing board ethics from the Governance Committee. I still have concerns regarding the 30-day posting, the impact on our librarians and district administration from a logistical standpoint, from delaying getting books into the hands of students, creating extra bureaucracy within the district, as well as an impact on classroom libraries and campus libraries. When librarians are out at a bookstore or at a conference, and they see a book that they think would be a great fit for their campus, they won't be able to just purchase it like they have in the past. And I find that that is limiting and will negatively affect our libraries. And it's just another example of not, not supporting and respecting the professionalism of our librarians. There's a couple of other places in the new policy that states that administrative regulations will be used to make several decisions. And I just want to remind that the public, that that's not open to the public and can be changed at any time by the superintendent without board input or approval. One last comment is, what has not changed in this policy since it was first developed is that CFISD will follow all state and federal laws. This board is not making any substantive changes to address inappropriate library materials.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go on to 7C. The board will consider approving the School Health Advisory Council membership for the 2024-2025 school year. Presentation by Ms. Gold.
I have a brief presentation. Thank you. All right. Well, I'd like to begin with the process of the selection process. And so we started with making sure that we were in accordance with our board policy, BDF Legal. The SHAC membership is actually found in this policy, which is under governance. And we notified all the members whose terms had ended, so that they were aware that their term had expired. Then I sent an email to cluster leaders, just asking them to work with their clusters to nominate one parent, and specifically asked them to not rely on the same parent that previously has served on maybe other committees. And then they were able to submit their names. And as a result of, oh, and then we asked, of course, the Board of Trustees to nominate a person. And so the result of that is the proposed membership for this upcoming school year. You also have a backup, in case that's easier for you to read. I know it's very tiny on the screen. You will notice that we have one vacancy for Cluster 7. We had the name of a person, but unfortunately, they, after further consideration, they are not able to participate. So we have one to fill. But for the most part, we have a complete list. Matt, answer any questions for you.
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll continue on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being brief. 7C, excuse me, 7C. 7D, the board will consider approving the sale of approximately 40 acres of land located Jack Road and Mound Road in Dunham Point Development. This item may be discussed in closed session. Are there any questions in closed session for this?
I do have questions, but I will ask them in closed session.
Great. Matt, we'll need you later. We'll need you for closed session for this one. Thank you. 7E, the board will consider approving the instructional materials for the State Board of Education-approved literature in the Bible and Western Civilization for Bible courses for the 2025-2026 school year. This item is corrected from the 2024-2025 school year to the 2025-2026 school year, and the addendum posted on August 7. We have one speaker, Dave Mann. You're up, sir. You don't sit down.
I have no objection to and take no offense at this elective course. I was an English major and could have used a class like this before getting to university. I had a lot of catching up to do to fully understand much of the English canon. But I find the timing a bit odd, and I have questions to which I would like some answers. The class has apparently been available to us for years, and I want to know why now, during a time of financial crisis and teacher shortages, who's going to teach it? Why now, coming on the heels of the Chaplain debate, Dan Patrick's support for and envy of Oklahoma's Bible rule? Is this some part of the agenda? Is this a partisan maneuver? The law says the Bible will be used in a strictly academic context, not for proselytization. How are you going to ensure that? Whatever I've read so far just says, we want to do this. Here's the book. We need more.
All right, any questions?
We have a presentation.
I'm sorry, you do have a presentation.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, lady.
Thank you. So this evening, we are recommending a textbook for your consideration to use as a resource to build curriculum for two-state credit elective courses, Literature in the Bible and Western Civilization in the Bible, that will be offered in the 2025-2026 school year. As elective courses, these are choice courses, not required or mandated for graduation. They are choice courses. As you know, CFISD offers a wide array of courses, and we periodically review other state or innovative courses that would provide learning opportunities beyond our current course offerings. Such as we did with the officiating course that we added last year. The purpose of these two course options is to develop a greater understanding of topics explored in other English and social studies classes. Currently, as part of the state-required curriculum, there are texts that must be addressed that include religious literature, including the Hebrew scriptures, the Old Testament, and the New Testament, and its influence on history and literature. These texts are currently embedded in curriculum for world cultures, world history, world geography, government, US history, and even Texas history. Although there is not a state Board of Education-approved textbook, there's not a textbook that they have for these elective courses, we still followed our process for selecting and recommending textbooks. We had teachers and district staff evaluate the textbook using a rubric, and that's how they came to the recommendation of a textbook. We also provided an opportunity for parents and community members to view the textbook and provide input. We had approximately 33 people view the textbook, and we received input from 15 people. And I provided on the dais for you a copy of the input that was received, and then a copy of the textbook, as you know, was made available to you as well. So Dr. Bergman will continue with the presentation.
So as Dr. Macias shared, we have two new elective offerings.
So as Dr. Macias shared, we have two new elective offerings for the 25-26 school year. The first one would be an English elective, Literature in the Bible, which would be a full-year course. The second elective would be Western Civilization in the Bible, which would be a one-semester course. Students would be eligible to take both courses if they chose. Both of these elective courses are included in the Text Education Code, and the purpose of courses in this section is to help students develop biblical content knowledge of characters, poetry, narratives, their prerequisites for understanding contemporary society, including literature and public policy. As Dr. Macias shared, there are no state-adopted or recommended resource for these elective courses. So we didn't necessarily start with a list like we normally do, but we collaborated and reached out to other districts to learn who in the area, or even really across the state, offer Bible literacy courses. And we learned that the recommended textbook tonight, The Bible and Its Influence, is used in several districts. We also learned of another text that's typically used in college courses, but was mentioned by a district, The Bible, A History and Literature Introduction. And so that one was reviewed as well. Both books were reviewed using rubric by curriculum staff and teachers, and we determined that the resource that we are recommending was best suited for these courses. The recommended resource, just for local, is also used in Conroe and Klein and Mesquite ISD that we're aware of. This textbook provides explicit connections to history and literature and is aligned with course teaks. The textbook also supports the established guidelines for these courses. Scripture excerpts are provided in the textbook, which will assist in curriculum writing and references. Like other textbook resources, this resource will not be used in its entirety. It's also important to share that copies of the Bible will not be provided or used as instructional materials. However, students may reference scripture excerpts from their own personal Bible and translation of their choice. Studies in both of these courses will be approached academically. The course will focus on developing an awareness of religious content and its influence on literature and Western civilization. The book clearly identifies the content and the connections between the English teaks and social studies teaks that will be studied. Students will not be pressed to accept religion or engage in practice of religion, and religious views will be presented, religious views will be presented in a neutral context in alignment with our current existing board policy. This policy specifically addressed controversial topics and how they are delivered in impartial manner and objective. Students will never be asked to conform to any of the beliefs encountered in the courses because this is an academic study of the content. The addition of these electives will have many benefits for scholarly growth. Research has shown that increased cultural literacy often results in higher scores on standardized tests and on college entrance exams. I'm gonna share with you information about one book, but there are many other resources out there. One particular AP Literature and Comprehensive Prep book provided a large list of allusions that it recommended students should know to be adequately prepared, and 60% of that list were biblical allusions. The recommended text provides these explicit connections that will support these benefits, such as increasing the understanding of historic speeches, such as Abraham Lincoln's Second Inaugural Address, and Dr. Martin Luther King's references to the Promised Land in his speeches. Also, it will increase the ability to recognize and understand biblical references in major literary works, such as Hemingway's Old Man in the Sea or Charles Dickens' A Tale of Two Cities. There are many more of those examples. And at this time, we welcome any questions.
Questions? Go ahead, Julie.
Okay, I did bring a list. So my first one is actually, has already been asked, but what or who prompted these courses to be added now?
The superintendent.
Okay.
So, and I'll just explain that. So I was looking for a couple of state-approved courses that I like to see for kids, for options, for local options. Mexican-American Studies, African-American Studies, and this course also. It gives some kids some flexibility. And if they do select it in the fall, or I'm sorry, in the spring course catalog, then we need to have our stuff in a row for that kind of stuff. This won't be the last time you'll hear me push on curriculum to find some other ones. I don't know if you've noticed, but what they're doing in terms of the kid's high school career is trying to find, we're trying to find options for them to take more things outside of just GPA stuff, right? I remember as a kid, too, that, you know, you were chasing the GPA points, but there are things that we can do in our grade calculations to allow them to explore other options. And starting with state-approved courses, elective courses, is a good place to start. So this won't be the first or the last one. But there was nothing like some underlying reason why I have this course, because I was actually looking at the other two courses as well, and I understand we already offer one of them.
Right, yes, we do already offer African-American Studies in our high schools, but not Mexican-American Studies yet. But I'm, I'm pleased to hear that you're looking at that.
We actually offer both.
Oh, we do? Oh, I did, haven't seen that. Oh, well, thanks for, that's fantastic. Thanks for sharing that. We both learned something today. Okay. Was there a survey of students or parents conducted to gauge interest in adding this elective?
In this case, there wasn't, and a survey isn't always common. As Dr. Macias mentioned, the team sports course that we brought to you last year was a course that we learned about, and what, there wasn't a similar opportunity in our other courses. And so we brought that to you, and similar to these two. We are, we really depend on the student choice, actually. And so we don't, we're not gonna limit which high schools have these courses. But student course requests will determine whether or not the courses are offered. Our Mexican-American or African-American Studies, sometimes they're offered every year, sometime every other year since they're electives. And so this would be one that would stay on the course selection options as well.
Got you. And so speaking of that, how many students will be required to register for the course in order for it to make at a particular campus?
So the law related to this course says that if less than 15 students select the course, the district doesn't have to offer it. We try to be flexible. Some of our special topics in social studies, those seat numbers are down between 15 and 18 to try to give opportunity for students to access those courses. It also is a staffing consideration in terms of offering a lot of courses with fewer students. And so that will also be a consideration. But we hope that the seat count will be flexible enough to, to help it be offered.
Okay, great.
And Ms. Heineman, this is no different than any other course that we offer.
Right. So speaking of staff, will new teachers need to be hired, or will current teachers on campus be assigned to teach the elective?
No new teachers will be needed.
Okay.
This would work similar to other electives that are offered. Again, students put in their course request, and then the principal and, and their leadership team look at those course requests, and then work within their staffing to determine which courses can be offered and how they might work within their schedule.
Okay. And if there's a chance that we don't have a teacher that meets the qualifications, I know there's certain qualifications in the education code, as well as some specialized training that's required by TEA. What would we, what would we, we just wouldn't be able to offer at that time? Until we could get somebody trained?
The certifications that are required are very common among our teachers. So a composite English, History or Social Studies, all of those certifications would qualify someone to teach the course. You may have seen in the TEA materials that it does specify a teacher training.
Right.
TEA did not receive funding for that, and they've never developed that training.
Well, then.
However, you know how much we invest in our teachers here in Cyfair.
Right.
And so appropriate teacher support, of course, will be part of any new course that's offered.
Thank you for answering that. I did see that in the materials, that it said TA was gonna create training and pay for it, but I guess that didn't happen. Okay. Let's see. I just want to confirm this is elect, these, this class will be for elective credit, only not a credit for ELAR or a social studies.
That is correct.
Correct, okay. And, and it would not receive CCMR credit? It wouldn't count towards CCMR?
It's, it's in a, one's an elective in English and one's an elective in social studies. So it's not in those AP courses or things like that during that list. I will say, though, that we have endorsements that students may be interested in, that in those endorsements require additional electives in ELA or social studies. So this could be something that students who are interested in those pathways would select.
Like a liberal arts focus or one of those. Okay. So just one concern I have really is just this, this idea of resources that, you know, we, we have heard from parents that we're unable to provide some AP classes at some campuses, or more AP classes at campuses, and those are classes that actually do contribute to preparing students for college and career, and do count towards the Texas accountability system. And this doesn't. So that, that's just a concern I have about the allocation of resources when we're short-staffed on campuses and within your own curriculum and instruction department.
So again, Ms. Heineman, this is, it's a choice class, right? So, so, so parents can choose their students who take additional advanced courses and not, not this course. And as Dr. Bergman shared, we're not looking at adding another teacher. A teacher may, may be teaching multiple sections of, you know, English III, for example, and one section of this, one of these courses.
Okay, good, thank you. We did receive feedback, thank you, from the community. We received it earlier today in our subcommittee. So I do encourage my fellow board members to read through that. And then if there's any other feedback from the community, I didn't receive any additional feedback from the community. So I just want to share that. There was a comment about omitting chapters from the recommended textbooks. So just, that's something that's in the feedback that I would, again, encourage, encourage the other board members to read. So thank you for answering my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I just want to thank Dr. Killian for bringing this to the district as an option and to be out there looking at the different things that we can offer to our students. You know, as it says, "Studies have shown that increased cultural literacy often, often results in higher scores on standardized tests and makes people well-rounded." I think it's wonderful that we're offering this, and I appreciate that. And I think the textbook is well-done. It seems very interesting and fascinating, even if somebody doesn't have that background. There's a lot of things people will recognize as standard phrases, excuse me, and terminology that are well-known in the community, and it actually has a biblical or Hebrew background. So, thank you.
I would also like to comment to the choice, adding choices. I appreciate the work on the reworking GPA and all that, and combined with adding courses, because we are entering an environment of education competition or choice. Every time we can continue to innovate and add options and add flexibility for students, I think that lets us compete to be the very best choice for every family. And so I appreciate these, continuing to see such creative programming coming forward that gives choice, especially when it can be managed with the staff we already have, in the schools we already have. So I appreciate the effort on, and the work from your department, Linda. Thank you.
Push up.
Some feedback as well. I spoke to a community member that their, their child had actually taken this course at University of Houston recently. And all they had was positive feedback and had a lot of additional discussion at the dinner table. A lot of things that the parent learned, or even that they had forgot. So a lot of, a lot of positive, you know, if this, you know, creates some conversation and, you know, helps, helps our kids become a little bit more well-rounded with the understanding, you know, and, and obviously, you know, it, it has to do with, with obviously the literature and its effect on historical events. I, you know, again, I, I applaud you, Doug, for bringing this as, as an option, and it's not a requirement. I just want to continue to speak on that. It is an option, not a requirement.
Seeing no more questions, we'll move on to seven F. The board will consider approving the memorandum of understanding with Region Four Education Service Center regarding police patrol services. Any questions?
So the question I have is, do we have an idea of how much additional time we would be devoting in order to fulfill this request?
Okay, so we don't anticipate a large increase in time. Region Four building is just down the street from Holbrook Elementary. So it's already a part of our patrol zones. We would just provide coverage to that building. When we check Holbrook, we'll check Region Four.
Check, mic check, okay. So it's just one, one, one facility, one Region Four campus that we're providing additional security to.
That's correct. It's one building. It's their adjacent parking lots. My understanding is that they're in the process of upgrading their security measures. So they're adding fencing and some other items. And so once they add the fencing in, we'll become key holders for them so that we can enter the premises and check the, the interior of the fenced area and the building, and we'll provide those checks, you know, a few times a week. And then we'll do it for the year, and then they're gonna reimburse us the cost.
Okay. And, and the reason why I ask is about the time commitment is, I want to make sure, because, you know, one of the ongoing conversations we're gonna have is about providing safety, especially in light of some of the, the transportation discussions that we're having. So we want to make sure that we're not stretching our safety personnel thin, that we're prioritizing the safety for our students first, and make sure we have the requisite time and personnel to facilitate that.
Correct. And this is an overnight, this is an overnight patrol. So it doesn't take away from our daytime or evening time patrols and resources for our students during the day.
Thank you, Chief.
Seeing no more questions, thank you, Chief. Seven G. The board will consider approving the superintendent's recommendation to rescind the notice to the Evangelist here regarding proposed termination of her contract with the district. This item may be discussed in closed session. The following addendum was posted on August, board meeting agenda on Wednesday, August 7th, 2024. One A, the board will consider approving the renewal agreement with Lone Star College to facilitate the training for the Certified Nursing Assistant Certification for Practum of Health Science Students. Are there any questions for? Seeing none, seven E was revised, and seven E was corrected to the correct year. I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. Gilbert, good to see you here tonight as well. I'd like to thank also those who are watching from home, may have a motion to go into closed session. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now in closed session. We will not return from closed session.